This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to say something before we begin. There will be no executive sessions tonight. Please keep your phone lines muted unless you are speaking. All commissioners, remember that when you are speaking, to identify yourself first. Also, when you are voting, be sure to raise your right hand and identify. All citizens calling in will be muted. Anyone wishing to make a public comment may use the chat feature to ask a question. And I may choose to call on you at the end of the meeting or in connection with a related agenda item. Leslie, would you please call row?
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Gengar?
Sir.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Welsh?
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
This is Nick Hernandez. We have two items that were brought up last minute. They are in the amended agenda that you see on the screen below. Under new business, item number one, emergency funds request from South Central Kansas Medical Center. And number two, consider resolution authorizing the city to enter into a preliminary design build agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald. So those are the two items that are added.
Okay. I move that we accept the two new items. Number four, new business. Item one, the emergency funds request from South Central Kansas Medical Center. Number two, to consider the resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a preliminary design build agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald for an amount not to exceed $375,000. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Rogers here, and I will second those additions.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion second by Scott Rogers. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye and give your name.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Duane.
Aye, Jay Warren.
Thank you very much. The additions do I have approval of?
Mayor, can I ask one question before we go on?
Yes, sir.
I thought Andrew said that all this voting tonight would be a, it'd be a, not a voice vote, but each one of the...
That's correct, Jay. It'll be roll call.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be a roll call instead of raising your hand and saying that.
Well, some of us are online. Sorry. Okay. Do I have approval of the agenda now?
Commissioner Rogers, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that, Jay Warren.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'll go ahead and take roll call on that.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Eastman?
Commissioner Eastman, yes.
Commissioner Gengar?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welsh?
Yes. We have approval of the agenda. I show no old business. We'll move to new business.
Consent agenda.
Yeah, we need to do the consent agenda.
Where's that? Oh, yes, I need to have consent agenda roll call vote. The consent agenda is approving the minutes of the last meeting and of the special meeting. The 2019 audit approval. And a resolution authorizing a virtual public meeting of the government body to attend a special city commission meeting at noon Friday, April the 20th via go-to meeting. I move we accept the consent agenda.
Commissioner Rogers, second.
Roll call, Leslie.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gengar?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welsh?
Yes. No old business. New business, number one.
New business, item one, emergency funds request from South Central Kansas Medical Center.
This is Nick Hernandez. We did receive a request last week for funds to help South Central Kansas Medical Center during the COVID crisis in unforeseen circumstances that have arisen due to such. They have amended that request as of today to request a million dollars of emergency funds to be made available by April 13th. I believe that Jeff Bowman and Dan Yerkes are on the call as well to provide insight and to give the commissioners some background. So with that, I'll turn it over to either Jeff or Dan Yerkes.
Can I think I'm here? So I hope you can see me and hear me okay. This is Dan Yerkes. I'm honored to get a chance to talk to you and I hope you give me a hard time because you should. No, it is difficult for me to come and stand before the, or sit, I'm actually sitting in my office here, but before the commission and request this. But I mean, so what's happened is that as a hospital, South Central Kansas Medical Center and the corresponding clinics and so on, and most of you are familiar with what has happened there, that, you know, there were a lot of difficulties just about a year and a half ago. And I would say that we, there've been a lot of changes. And the Winfield Medical Arts was at the point where it'd been losing 80 some thousand a month. And finally, it was, well, last month it was profitable. And the reference lab that the previous administration entered into ended up actually costing over $1.1 million. It had to be paid back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And there's other still overhanging items there. And, but we've come over to that and there was a whole lot of accounts payable that was unpaid. And the current administration's worked through that and we just kind of were getting to the place where things were starting to be normalized, where maybe things would have gone okay. In fact, you know, brought on the, the Ark City Clinic. And finally, for the first time, you know, kept hearing that the City of Ark City needs more doctors. Finally, have some contracts for doctors that would be coming in. I think even today, Jeff found another doctor that if we make it through this, will come in 2021. A female physician that would be involved with OB and family practice. You know, those kinds of things just weren't happening before and we were having, you know, it was finally like things might be working out. But now with the stay-at-home orders and coronavirus crisis where the state has directed people not to do anything non-essential. Well, just if you think about it, the business there. Well, and I would say, Scott, you can imagine, because you're involved with the medical business, so to speak, that said, don't go in, you guys, you know, unless it's an emergency. Now, the hospital, I think we might be, the hospital might be better off than Rogers Family down the street. But at least for the short time, except that maybe you can get a small business association loan. That might help you guys out. But I mean, you know, if you think about all the procedures that people would do that would be on the non-essential list. I mean, everything from a knee replacement, a surgery for, you know, unless it's a appendix needs removed or a broken bone or something, people have been directed not to do that. And so that's what Jeff, I'll ask you to fill us in exactly, but I, something like 40% of our business has gone away. So, and what the real problem is, we would be glad as a board or trustees to request Small Business Administration help. As a city-owned hospital, that window is not currently open. We'd be glad to look for the help from the, well, HHS or, but as a non-critical access hospital, we're not really getting any help there. So I guess that we come to the City of Arkansas City as the source of funding of last resort. And, and I, well, it's about $100,000 or so or more a week that is, the hospital's losing without that extra revenue. And I, and I talked to Nick and I talked to Jeff and I get a little bit different information. So I'll let you guys talk a little bit about it. But I was told by Jeff and that there's FEMA money that we can request later. And up to 85% of what we request for how we've been affected by the coronavirus outbreak, even as far as business that couldn't continue, that we'll be able to request. Nick says that that's only for if we're taking care of coronavirus patients. So, and I, I don't know. And I talked, we, I, well, Jeff and I have been on calls and we talked to people from the, from our legislature's office and they seem like they're doing everything they think they can to get us some money, but none of it's there. And we're not going to have it right away. And in fact, it'll be about the payroll at the end of this month where the cash on hand will be less than the need. And so Jeff, I'll let you, if you could, speak a little bit about the actual dollars and cents.
Thank you, Dan. So on March 16th, we instituted the hospital incident emergency command system. And we have been documenting any patient that is a no-show or canceled due to the COVID virus as per the FEMA guidelines and the incident command system. We are losing approximately $100,000 a week. We are in a place now where the no-shows and the cancellations are way less. But we're factoring in financial reports from the previous February, March, April to see where we should have been. I'll give you an example of one provider that typically sees 30-plus patients a day is now dropped down to 18. One that always likes to have 17 a day is around 12, 10. So on daily calls with the health department, we have daily ICS meetings. We are documenting everything that is directly related to COVID in the law so that we can apply for the FEMA. We submitted our FEMA login information today to start the process. There's several other options that they say, they continue to say that it's very fluid. We know that phase two and phase three came very quickly out and some of the information changed, but it still did not change the fact that we are a government-owned hospital and SBA where on page two of the application clearly disqualifies us for that. Our, Mark Lynn, our consultant for our rural health clinics that's worked with the hospital prior to me coming here, has communicated to us that the government is looking to expand the program to specific rural health hospitals that are government-owned to hopefully open that up. I was interviewed by the Office of Inspector General for the United States Health and Human Services. I forwarded that report out to the mayor and Mr. Hernandez and a few people today. We were one of the 323 hospitals. One thing that sets us apart a little bit differently is I shared with them that we have three hospitals that were within a 30-mile radius of each other, serving about population of about 45,000. And as everyone knows, the week before we implemented the emergency incident command system, Wellington Hospital closed down. So I've shared with KDHE, KHA, Senator Moran, Senator Estes, I have the lieutenant governor. The fact that in a period of just one week, we went from 149 beds to 69. And tried to explain to them the urgency of helping us to be able to qualify for some of the funds. Because as you guys know, we missed the window to become a critical access hospital years ago. And they are paid 99 cents on the dollar where a PPS, which is what we are, gets 65 cents on the dollar. There's a 2% sequestration fee that has been removed for critical access hospitals and their reimbursement has been increased to 125%. So every dollar they bill to Medicare, they get a $1.25. As a PPS hospital, the sequestration fee was not removed. And we only get to be reimbursed 20% higher on COVID patients only, not all Medicare like a C, critical access. So there are several factors that are making it very difficult for us to operate with a 40% reduction in patients coming into the clinics. At the same time, being in the health field, we're very happy that people are staying in and following the orders to help flatten the curve in Cali County. And as of today, we still only have one patient in Cali County. But it's not taken lightly to have to ask you guys for the emergency money. But we do know that what we've been told on the backside, that anything that's documented, even from the city level, that they would be able to submit, that they gave these funds to the hospitals due to the COVID crisis and that up 85% would be reimbursed. I have that in writing to provide because we're on multiple calls. And every day, there's something different in the guidelines and projections. You can get an interpretation from BKD, our auditors, and then get a little bit of a different one from KHA and a little bit of different one from KDHE. So we're just asking for funds. We know that we will qualify for a prepayment of our Medicare for up to three months. The problem with that is, and what I've expressed to Senator Moran, is that after 120 days, they want to start recouping 100% of what they've paid us out. So if we're getting $100,000 a week, they'll start recouping that payment after 120 days. I did, and they're working on it with congressional leaders to see if CMS would consider reducing that to, say, 50% so that that Band-Aid isn't ripped off in 120 days, but actually gradually goes out. So just in a nutshell, we're losing approximately $100,000 a week. I have restructured departments. We have moved people around. We have asked for people to take 25% pay reduction. Several, several people have done that to help show their support of the hospital in helping us get through this crisis. We appreciate your support.
Karen, you're muted. This is Nick Hernandez.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Dan. Are there any comments from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Eastman.
Go ahead, Mr. Eastman. Commissioner?
Jeff, what have you done to reduce expenses at the hospital? I've had city, I've had citizens call me and want to know what you have done to cut down expenses. There's three clinics that are open now. Is there any plans to consolidate those clinics for the time being?
One of the issues, Wayne, is if we reduce or change the structure of the clinics, we have two rural health clinics and that feeds our 340B pharmacy program about $100,000 a month. Number one, I wouldn't be able to move a provider from, say, Winfield Medical Arts to Ark City Clinic unless they're credentialed and that process takes approximately four months. Where we're cutting the cost is what I said, that we actively reached out to employees that would be willing to take a 25% reduction through the end of May. Several people have actually offered that to even levels that are even higher than that, Duane. I've been very blessed and very surprised by the willingness of people to actually almost work for free just to help keep this hospital open.
So part of this, I'll answer also. This is Dan Yerkes. So part of it is, if we restructure, it's gonna, well, from talking with Jeff, I asked him the same question on. And if we do something like that, it's a permanent change because of the way, like Jeff's talking about, about credentialing and moving staff. So it's a question of that we don't know how long is the governor going to force us to stay in our home or how long till it returns to normal. And I think, at least from my standpoint as the chairman of the trustees, I hope this goes away and we can have everything back as normal. Now, that may not be an option and, and so that's, that's part of the, do we want to go that route? Or would you like to force us? You know, if that'd be what you'd say we should do because of the funding, then, you know, that's where we're, that's where we'd be at. I guess Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong on that. That's what I, that's what I've gathered from our talks.
This is Commissioner Eastman again. I just feel that we should try to cut expenses as much as we can. And where have we done that other than some employees have taken 25%, which I don't like, but because they're essential services. But say down the line, 90 days down the line, and we're in the same boat again, what's the plans then?
90 days down the line, we will definitely have the CMS advance. That's more than three months of Medicare historical data of what's been paid to the hospital and the clinics. That money doesn't come due for 120 days. And then that would be well into August, perhaps even September. They're saying they're moving up some of the FEMA stuff earlier to help for this because they understand that there's currently 1,700 rural health hospitals across the United States that are in jeopardy of closing due to this crisis. So the government understands and that's why the United States Health and Human Services did their study that I sent a copy of, that was published this week. And I think the congressional, what were the feedback we're getting from Senator Moran's office, Senator Estes, the lieutenant governor, everybody is that they understand that rural health hospitals have suffered and literally function pay period to pay period, if you will. If you look at us from the standpoint, in January and February, we profited about 100 and some thousand dollars for each month. But you're losing $100,000 a week. That's why we're in this crunch right now. I truly believe that there will be multiple programs that come open later, but we're not in this position when I have a 40% reduction and suddenly you're hit with a May with a three payroll month. That typically is a difficult month anyway. There's two of those a year. But when you have a 40% reduction of revenue and patients coming in, that even makes it more difficult.
So what is the income projection of, you've got, you've still got regular cases. And the emergency room at the hospital still takes those cases and then doctors have to do surgery. Do you have any projection of what that will bring in, in the next 60 days?
Laura is sending, doing the reports right now. But if you look at, our surgeries typically, Duane, are dominantly elective surgeries. We rarely have an opportunity to do emergency surgeries. We don't have a lot, a lot of apes. We don't have a lot of broken bones that we could treat here until now, having Dr. Ansari. So most of our emergency-type deals had been going out anyway. And now what we're losing is the niacin, the hernia repairs, typical elective surgeries. Let's say on a Monday, that's typically five to six surgeries. Now we're lucky if we see one.
Okay.
And it's not due to the patients or not to our lack of efforts. We have to give the patients the opportunity, you know, when they're doing their surgery prep. And a lot of them are following the governor's guidelines, saying, well, we're going to put this off until this is over.
The million dollars, how, will that pay salaries for two months?
The million dollars will pay the salaries through June.
Through June. Okay. I, that wasn't clearly explained in your letter?
I apologize for not making that clear.
So it's through June?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that about $333,000 per month will carry you through June?
Our payroll with, the normal payroll is close to 400,000 or a little bit over. With the reduction in pay, we're going to be running around 320.
Okay.
That's how many, how much people have offered to give up of their normal income is well over $80,000 a pay period.
Okay. All right. I just felt that there need to be more black and white numbers for the citizens to see if we're giving, helping the hospital out with a million dollars. It's their money and they need to see that, I believe. Okay? Anybody, I'll, I'll stop for a minute and let somebody else talk.
Is there anyone else wanting to make comments?
Yeah, this is Jay Warren. I'm going to make a motion that we give the hospital a million dollars. We have no recourse in this thing. I mean, there's, Jeff, I think asked you some good questions and they're cutting back as much as they can. And they have to cut back even more so down the road. But we cannot afford to lose this hospital. I mean, with the, you know, with Wellington shutting down, we just, we only got 65 beds in this whole county right now. It's a total disaster. So I make a motion, we approve the million dollars for the hospital.
I have a motion to accept request for the emergency funds. Do I hear a second?
This is Canyon. I second.
I have a motion and a second from Jay, second from Canyon. Are there any other discussions?
Yes, there is. This is Commissioner Eastman. How, where's the city going to get the million dollars to give the hospital?
This is Nick Hernandez. The funds will actually come from a combination of our utility reserves and potentially general fund revenues. It just depends, it's going to come from one of those sources, so.
This is Dan again. And so Jeff, I mean, I guess, can you give us even, just tell a little bit more about the, what you think the FEMA program's going to look like? I know, you know, we discussed it a little bit, but the commissioners might, because, you know, if we get the, I guess, what we came up with is we think that 85% of that money will either come from the state or the federal government. But, and when I talked to Nick today, he doubted that. But could you guys address that a little bit, Jeff, to me at least? I know what we had talked about.
Well, this is Nick Hernandez. I have a letter from Brian Stone, who actually talked to the Public Assistance Group and the person who's in charge of public assistance for the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. And I'm going to share that with the commissioners right, real quick. And it was as of yesterday. So Brian Stone, you, I think you all know is the emergency manager for the county. He says that, you know, it can change and we haven't seen new guidance as of today, but that could all change. But FEMA does not pay for lost revenue or anticipated lost revenues. The city can apply for funds once this process does get started. While it's different, there are some similarities. The city can request reimbursement for category B emergency protective measures. Like he says, while that may be barricades or sandbags during a flood, it may also be PPE. PPE ventilators or other medical equipment related, specifically related to this event. Employee hours can also be counted, but it is only overtime and not regular time.
Jeff, Jeff, I, I guess I'm going to interrupt because I really thought we, we had come up with that, that there's a, the program is going to allow us to request money or the city to request money for this.
We have a completely different email from Brian Stone addressing how the city, how the hospitals apply for it. This appears to be more for the city because it says.
Right, and that's what I wanted you to make sure that you got that out there, Jeff. I wanted to make sure you addressed that because I think it's important.
So the Kansas Hospital Association clearly told us that they're changing, everything's fluid, it's changing dramatically, that we would be able to apply for 75%. That would be FEMA and 10% would be the state for a total of 85%. We have to document every patient that cancels due to COVID. We document every patient that we care for with COVID. We document every lost revenue that specifically said that when a patient calls in and says, I'm not coming into the doctor because of the COVID, the governor has told us to stay home. So we are documenting every bit of that and that's, we've even had it entered into Athena so that we can run the reports as required by FEMA when we get to that stage. So that's the information we get from the Kansas Hospital Association. And I have a different email from Brian Stone that came from our public information officer that had several attachments and he started the process. We've already submitted the FEMA login information through them for the hospital. So we, we've gotten different information for the hospital than what I'm seeing here for the city.
Right, and that's right, I just, I was glad, I, anyway, and I know I'm not the commissioner here, but I wanted to make sure that we got to present that part from the hospital's standpoint, that, that we, we do anticipate an 85% back.
So just to clarify on that, Ms. Mayor, this is why we're documenting the $100,000 a week lost. We're also able to do projections based off historical data and that's why we've started that process because like I said, doctors that would normally see 30 patients seeing half of that, we're able to present the data from the previous year at the exact same, exact same time. For example, let's say that March, we did 20 MRIs this year, but we can prove that in March of last year, we did 55. We can put our average reimbursement of what that number is and see what the projected revenue loss is compared to last year. And I wanted to go back with Dwayne. I mean, Dwayne, unfortunately, as far as trying to cut costs, other than employee costs, we don't have the ability to cut anything else that operates the hospital. In fact, we're having to get more PPE than anybody ever anticipated us having. We ordered the new, you guys approved as a, I'm sorry, the hospital board of trustees approved a new lab machine that we bought the supplies for that would normally last us for 90 days that we ran through in less than a month. We do a typical, one of the VSM tests is typically maybe 20 a month. We did 57 in the month, month of March because that's required before you can qualify to do the COVID test. So we have a, an increased cost in the lab, supplies that we're having, gowns, bunny suits, literally everything to prepare, prepare us for what's coming, we're actually having to get. We have a lot that's been brought in by the state and our Cali County Health Department has been absolutely amazing to work with. I think that if you look at the stats, per capita, we've done more tests per capita than any other county in the state of Kansas and I attribute a lot of that to Thomas Langer.
This is Nick Hernandez. I actually have Brian Stone on the phone. Can you run through what FEMA or what you heard from FEMA today for Brian Stone and I's, just for a recap? That, that would be directed to Jeff Bowman.
I'm sorry, what?
I have Brian Stone, Kansas, Cali County Emergency Manager on the phone. Can you relay to him what, what you were told from KDM?
I wasn't told, I don't know who KDM is. I said I talked with KDHE, KHA daily.
And they were getting guidance from KDM, Kansas Department of Emergency Management. Is that what you stated, correct?
I'm looking for the email so that I, I don't know how to share that with you guys, but.
Well, that's, you know, it's a, honestly, it's a, it's a point that we'll just have to visit with about later. The fact does remain for the commission that the request is on the table and this is just something that you're just going to have to potentially look at as being funds that will not be reimbursed to the city. I think you need to take that approach. FEMA is very fickle. Sometimes they can change programs and they have been known to do that occasionally. It just depends on the emergency, but we're just trying to, I just want to set the commission up and let them know that this is probably not going to be, all those funds probably will not be reimbursed. A portion, yes, but then you're going to have to make the decision, does the hospital keep those funds or do they, you know, to help bolster their operations and, and reimburse them or does that come back to the city for reimbursement to us?
Well, this is Canyon. We're a long ways from that right now. We're in the middle of a crisis. We don't know what the federal or state is going to come up with before all of this is over and we do know that healthcare is the number one concern of both the federal government and the state. So I believe that the Kansas Hospital Association is on top of it and Jeff is in direct contact with them. So I, I fully believe that the information they're getting is information that's regarding the hospital and what can be done for it.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
One thing, this is Commissioner Rogers real fast. One thing Jeff, that may help alleviate some of the citizens' mind is as, as we go through these next couple of months, it would be nice, because I know, you mentioned the general thing, our sort of medical is even more complicated and changing even at a more rapid pace than dentistry as the changes going on, but as applications are maybe applied for, grants are applied for, or any assistance that you may receive, I'm not saying, say, hey, here's what we got, give it, give it back to us right now by any means. It'd just be nice for the citizens and they're like, hey, these are the things we've gotten, here's where we're at, kind of just keep us up to date over the next couple of months as to what, what's happening at the federal level, the state level and some of the programs that we may be able to apply for. And I know there's some we can't and I know we'll get questions about that. So it'd be nice to keep some clarity on, hey, we can apply for this, we can't because of this, or, you know, just, I just ask that we keep some communication and some open dialogue with this so that way the citizens are at least informed, but hey, you know, they are trying, here's what's been out there, here's what's been discussed and then that way we can be at least kept in the loop as a community on this.
Absolutely. So I'll ask our public information officer to provide a weekly update on what the current conditions are on the different options available specifically to us. Do you want any of the options that are still not available to us because of being a city-owned hospital or not a.
I don't think any of the current ones. I know like some will say, well, how come Winfield's going to get this and we don't? Well, I mean, a lot of us have critical care. I understand that and I know a lot of us here on the call do, but some in the community may not. And so I think it's just good to let them know, hey, we're trying for these, but some of these probably aren't going to be applicable to us just because we can't, we're not in the same situation, we're in a different, we're in different shoes than some of those hospitals, even some of the other rural hospitals across the state or nation right now. And so it'd just be nice to know that, hey, these are the ones we can, these are the ones we may or may not. And just like that, I'm not, I don't need details every day or every minute, but it'd just be nice maybe at every work session, hey, here's kind of where we're at, here's what we've applied for, here are the ones we can't because of this, you know, and go from there. It doesn't need to be weekly, even just at a work session occasionally, just keep, so the community can be kept, you know, informed on these things. That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely, Dr. Rogers.
This is Commissioner Eastman and that's, that's my point. We, as hospital trustee, we can ask for money, which we need, but we also have to tell the community what it's needed for and so that's, that's my, that's my point.
Okay.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Also, I'm familiar with disasters and I know FEMA is very slow in responding to requests, although they say they will get it done quickly, it doesn't happen quite that fast. Also FEMA will only, under normal circumstances, I'm not sure what the regulations are, for this particular event, will not pay for employees' compensation for working or anything to do with the building unless it's connected to the COVID-19. I understand the equipment. Were you planning on getting any equipment, Jeff, for the hospital in relation to this? Apparently he's not with us right now.
I don't know, this is Dan, I don't know. Jeff already mentioned about gowns and respirators and things like that that we've had to get. I don't know, I don't have a specific list of all the supplies, but.
Okay, well, I'm sure you understand what I'm saying, Dan.
Yeah, I, I hear you, but I, I can't tell you, I can't tell you the exact number or what things, so, anyway.
I apologize if that was a question for me, Dan, my phone dropped.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Did you hear the question or Karen? Go ahead, sorry, I'll, I'll step.
I just wondered if this money was going to be singular in nature as to just the operations or is there some COVID-19 information that will be purchased for the hospital or?
Well, we're understanding and what we're being told on our calls with KHA and they call it a hospital huddle, huddle, it's every Tuesday at 10:00 AM, that we will be able to submit and that's why we're documenting everything that's specifically related to a loss. You're, I believe I heard you before my call dropped, that it was something about it didn't go towards a payroll. That is correct. Now there is a pay, I think it's called paycheck or pay something under the SBA that if that opens up, we would be able to apply for that, which they're hoping that would happen. And any employees that we had from February 15th to April 26th, we would have to document that they still were on the payroll through June 30th. And that's one of the reasons that we're specifically doing everything we can to avoid any sort of layoffs or furloughs because we're told that there is a chance that would open up and I would hate to be able to lay off a couple of people and then be disqualified for that if in fact they do allow city-owned hospitals to participate in that program. Now, our understanding is the SBA is going to run the grant, the, the loan process, but if you meet the qualifications and you stay, the employees from February 15th to 24th through June 30th, that, that would be written off as a grant. And that program specifically is generated at 1.5 times your monthly payroll and it caps any employee that makes over 100,000, that you can only include 100,000 of that payroll per year. So we're working on that. That's a different program that falls under the SBA as well.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Dan, are there any further questions to Jeff or Dan? I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Karen? Karen? This is Kathy Cornwell, City Finance Director. To answer one of the questions earlier, the funds are most likely going to have to come from our utility fund. At this point, we do not know how much delay or delinquencies we will have due to this. Transfers to the general fund from the utilities is a little over a million dollars for the year, but we were preliminarily looking at our general fund with either, we don't know yet what they're going to do on, we know that they've already delayed some of the motor vehicle registrations, we don't know if that will continue, we don't know what our ad lorem taxes and any kind of delinquencies will be, but we're kind of, we think on, at the, at best, we will probably have a 10% reduction in the general fund, which, I don't know, three quarters to a million dollars and that's on a $10 million general fund. I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, you mentioned that, that the million dollars would cover your salaries through June. Is that correct? Would that be six periods?
I think he got dropped again, call, he was caller 14 and I think he was dropped.
This is Canyon. Did the mayor call for a roll call vote?
He's just dropped off again. I'm sorry.
Well, Jeff texted me, this is Dan, and he said yes. That was the answer to the last question about payroll. The answer is yes.
Okay. Well, are we, yeah.
I'm sorry, Canyon, what?
I was asking if you called for a roll call vote already.
I was very close. Kathy, if you could.
Kathy, sorry, my phone dropped, yes.
So that, that's your six pay periods through June?
Yes, ma'am.
That's 320,000 per pay period?
Correct, so we're using that for the three in May.
Okay, where are we at?
Roll call vote. Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay, Commissioner Eastman?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welsh?
I have a unanimous vote. It's passed. Number two.
There, now that helps. I put my face up, but not my voice. Thank you so much for listening to us and, and caring about the hospital and helping us go through with this, so. And I'll make sure and Jeff and I will keep you updated on all the programs and everything as we're doing that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Karen, did you want me to continue with item two?
Yes, please.
Okay. Consider a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a preliminary design-build agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell CAS Constructors LLC, Arc City Joint Venture for the wastewater treatment plan improvement projects for an amount not to exceed $375,000.
Nick, is there someone here to speak for that?
Actually, I'll do the speaking, but we do have, I believe, two representatives from Burns &amp; McDonnell here with us. Brian Meyer, I believe, is here. Brian, is there anyone else on the phone from Burns &amp; McDonnell tonight?
Jeff Keller is on the, on the line as well and I think available to answer questions about the proposed agreement.
Okay, we, we did visit about this last Friday at the study session. This actually will set the stage and get us moving towards getting the wastewater treatment plant renovated and rehabilitated. We did have Kansas Rural Water Association go through the wastewater plant with us and they did determine that the steps that we have been taking are the correct ones, that we don't need a new plant, which we knew, we just need to rehab the existing plant. It is in compliance, but we are in a pretty unique situation where the state revolving loan fund would potentially, the interest rate on the state revolving loan fund is in between 1 and 2% currently, so interest on those would be very, very low. Also, the design-build process that we're looking for.
would be a much quicker process. And I know that Tommy's on the line, or was on the line, Tommy Bowman was on the line, and I believe Rod Philo is on the line as well. If the commissioners have any questions that may have come up since Friday's presentation. So, I'll just open it up to questions to the folks from Burns &amp; McDonnell, and also Tommy Bowman and Rod Philo.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
This is Canyon, I have a question. Rod? How many studies have already been done on the sewer plant? My understanding was like, at least two. Can you give me a number?
As far as nutrient removal, we've only done one. That was back in 2008.
Okay. But on updating and doing the plant, have we done studies on that already?
No, the one in '08 was the only.
Only study?
And that was a schedule of compliance on our permit at that time.
Okay, but at this time, we are not out of compliance for anything, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
This is for Burns &amp; McDonnell. Can you remind us what your design-build process will be for this first phase? What you will be doing?
Yes, sir, this is Brian Meyer. And I think with Jeff Keller on the line, I will have him walk through kind of the process that's going to take place that would get us through this initial phase and provide the services for the assessment of needs and the condition assessments and drive us toward the solution. So, Jeff, you want to kind of go through the process?
Yeah, that's fine. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Want to make sure that everybody can hear my audio? Hello? Okay, good. So, yeah, going through what's called a Phase One Assessment for this project. It's a method we've used for 25 to 30 other communities in Kansas for their wastewater plants. But Phase One does, it brings us into a test what needs to be improved in the plant. So, consider, wasn't need to be improved. What is in good condition? What can be tasked for?
Excuse me? Am I the only one not hearing?
I can hear, this is Jay Warren, I can't hear him either. You start.
And per, for time, this is the.
This is Nick Hernandez, Jeff Keller. This is Nick Hernandez.
Needs in terms of near-term, permanent, long.
Does anybody else have any difficulty understanding him, or is it just?
He has a slow connection.
With Tommy? And Rod? So, that any kind of new equipment that needed to be?
I'm sorry, Jeff, I cut you off. Brian, can you get ahold of Jeff and have him actually call in? His connection is really slow.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That was difficult to.
And not only the cost.
We'll be right back, I'll try, but Jeff, no.
What we'll do, Brian, is we'll go ahead and we'll move forward with the next part of the commission meeting. And then we'll come back to you. Is that okay, Mayor Welch?
Yes, sir.
That are out hitting right now.
We'll let him know, Nick, thank you.
Leslie?
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Eastman?
Leslie, we haven't made a motion. We were having difficulties, technical difficulties. We're going to move to the next item and come back.
Okay. There is no other item. It would be city manager updates.
Okay.
I'll go ahead, we do have a few updates. And I may have actually Andrew talk a little bit about the complete count committee. But we are planning on having a traffic safety meeting 10:00 AM Friday, April 10th. The complete count meeting is scheduled for noon Thursday, April 9th. And Andrew, do you have currently the numbers of the response rates of the county and of Arc City available that you want to kind of give the update to the commissioners on?
Sure, give me a second here, I'll try to pull it up. Last I checked, we were getting close to 40% response rate for our city, which is actually really good. Helps if I share the screen. So, I'll just pull up the newest count. They actually are live updating this every day. If you want to check it out, it's actually kind of cool because you can drill down to county level or the city level. But basically, the committee is continuing its work. We're meeting now weekly by teleconference and just trying to figure out some new ways to get the word out. Kansas as a whole, Kansas is at 50%, which is really impressive, I think, for being the first sort of official week. And the last I had seen, Cali County was not far off of that state average. Pull it up here in a second. But just to kind of give you some background, we had brainstormed quite a few outreach ideas that all basically got thrown out the door because of COVID-19. So, we were going to do neighborhood census parties and a lot of other neat things. And now, we've had to completely back and scramble and come up with some new ideas. So, we're doing a lot of social media outreach right now, but we're kind of coming up with some new, more innovative ideas to get people to try and respond. Cali County is at 46.4% response rate. Of that, 37.5% have responded by internet. And I think that that's been to our benefit, having that internet option. It seems to be pretty popular with the people who have the ability to access it that we did not have in 2010. Our Kansas City specifically, I'm pulling up the census tracks for that now. I apologize, there's a little lag on this mapping tool. We are at 44.6%, but as you can see, the internet response rate is only 27.8%. And that's the thing that the committee's been concerned about for the last year, is that we don't have, a lot of our citizens do not have good internet access or any internet at all. And our plans to provide locations for them to go online and do this have been impacted by those facilities all being closed down due to coronavirus. So, that's kind of what we're working on. Specifically, our northeast quadrant has actually had the best response rate that we've seen. And I'm pulling up the individual tracks now. And now, it looks like the northwest has caught up. So, yeah, we have 50% response in the northeast part of Arc City, 44% in the northwest. And as we kind of anticipated, the southern half of the town is kind of lagging. 35.8% in, and 40% in the southeast. Those internet rates are really low, 16.8% and 13.9%. So, what we're actually getting are people calling in or possibly even having already returned their mail questionnaire, which about three quarters of the town got it, the version that they could fill out and mail back at the same time as the internet invite. So, we certainly would welcome any ideas anyone has. There is in our Kansas City area a complete count committee Facebook page and also a Twitter feed. And certainly, any organizations that want to go on and share our posts, we would definitely welcome that. We're just trying to encourage people to get their census returned as soon as possible so we don't have to try and send enumerators to their door in the middle of a pandemic. Do you have any questions?
When does the, this is Canyon, when does the census need to be completed by?
The original period was through the summer. To be honest, it goes, it can go into the fall when they have to try to do numerator counts and double back and catch people. But really, the drop deadline is the end of the year because that's when the Census Bureau by the Constitution has to deliver the updated counts to the president because then redistricting has to commence pretty quickly thereafter to be done in time for the next session. So, they have this year to get it done. And they are continuing to push back. The training was originally going to be in early May, and that's being pushed back. They've pushed back field operations an additional few weeks. So, it's all kind of up in the air, and they'll definitely be scrambling when they can perhaps get back in the field. And so, anything we can do as citizens to just get our responses in sooner would definitely be a help to the Census Bureau. But I want to, I just want to emphasize that we're doing really well in south-central Kansas particularly, compared to even other parts of the state. And Kansas as a whole, I think, is still in the top 10 of states in the entire country in response rate, or very close to it. So, we are doing good, and I'm proud of that. But we can continue to get the word out there.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
I was going to say, it's really easy to do it online. I was surprised. It won't let you make a mistake. Nick, is there?
Nick Hernandez. Jeff Keller is on the line now, so he can give his rundown now, I believe. Jeff, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I can. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Oh, that's great, okay. I've dropped, I turned off the computer and just called on my phone. That seems to work a lot better. Okay, so, the Phase One agreement that's under consideration tonight is part of a pre-formalized approach that Burns &amp; McDonnell and CAS has used to do over 25 water and wastewater treatment plant improvement projects across the state. And each one of them has been very successful for the clients, for the cities and municipalities. And what this agreement adds up to is it starts with an assessment of your treatment plant, which we already know quite a bit about it. So, the assessment is not going to be very lengthy or take much time or effort. Where we really focus most of the time and effort is in coming up with different options on how to make the improvements to improve the plant in the most cost-effective way possible for Arc City. So, we look at what pieces of the facility need to be replaced, what parts of the facility can be, continue to be used in the manner they're being used now. And then, we also look to see, are there parts of the plant that can be retasked to do other things? So, there's still value in that asset. The next thing we do is we look at the new equipment that might be needed primarily to meet new water quality requirements that are just a few years down the road. We really have to start that planning and evaluation now so that the new equipment is in place and operational in time for your new permit to become active around 2025. As part of that, we talk about different technologies with Tommy, with Rod. We go to other Kansas treatment plants to talk to those operators who have that kind of equipment, make sure everybody understands how easy or difficult they are to operate, how well the respective equipment manufacturers and reps help service and maintain that equipment. So, at the end of the day, we can make selections on what's going to go into this project based on the best choice for the community, not just on a capital cost, but on the long-term lifecycle cost and operability. When that's all in place, then we work with CAS Construction, our partner of us, to put together, not a complete sign, but it's around 20% to 30% design. If enough that CAS can look at those plans and come up with a firm price to build it. And what that gets the community of Arc City, it gets you a firm price way, way earlier in the project than you would ever get with any other approach. So, that before anything is built, you know exactly how much it's going to cost. And if the cost comes in and it's good, we can move forward into the next phase of the agreement. If the cost comes in and it's too high, we can regroup and decide, okay, what maybe can be changed to bring the cost down? What parts of this plan can maybe be deferred or delayed or altered to make it more affordable? So, it really is a good, flexible tool for you to get the improvements you need at a cost that works. And then, the last thing I want to say is there are components of the plant right now that have needed to be replaced for a little while that are really critical and could fail at any time. It's pretty concerning. And so, part of what we will do in the first phase of work is identify those immediate needs and how we're going to fix those, make sure that whatever the fix is, it'll be a long-term fix. It'll fit into a long-term vision. And as soon as construction can get underway, those critical pieces get addressed first. So, this design-build approach, again, it's something we've used on multiple, multiple communities. We've got lots of folks from across Kansas who can talk to you about how well it's on form. And it's something we're all really familiar with on the team. So, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
This is Commissioner Eastman. What is the, with your program, you said that we fixed the things that needed to be fixed already. Do you have any idea what those are yet since we've kind of kept them going with baleen wiring, I would say?
Yeah, Commissioner Eastman, thanks for asking. There are a few things that we know right now need immediate attention. There is some electrical gear that's in really poor shape. And so, from reliability standpoint, even from the safety standpoint, that piece of equipment needs to get fixed as soon as possible. There is some process equipment that removes grit, like fine sand and small rock and everything, out of the water. That hasn't worked in a long, long time. And so, a lot of what Tommy ends up doing when you get rain and thunderstorms and everything, he's knocking out all that grit out of the tank because it builds up because that process doesn't work. And if we can get that back in service, that's really good. There's a couple other items that have failed or about to fail any moment. But the ones that are more focused on safety and reliability and permit compliance are the ones we want to address immediately to give you a little bit of breathing room while the rest of the improvements can get put into place.
Hey, this is Commissioner Eastman again. Would you be able to tell the city if we can do those while you're also doing your design-build? Kind of keep us ahead of the game?
What we want to do is be able to get those as soon as we're under the construction contract. The agreement that you're considering today is a professional services contract, and it doesn't allow for construction. But what it does allow for is for those plans and those improvements to get laid out so as soon as we're in a place to do it, those get fixed immediately versus 18 or 24 months down the road. So, it does get you there very, very early, way earlier than anything else. And yeah, for sure, we would keep the city appraised on exactly when those safety and critical items get fixed. We'd want you to know right away that those have been taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Dwayne, this is Nick Hernandez. One of the reason why Jeff Keller and Burns &amp; Mac and we're at this step in the process is we really need to take advantage of Rod Philo and Tommy Bowman's expertise while we can. You know, both of the gentlemen are eligible for retirement anytime. If we work on this project, if it takes five, six years, I would hate to lose them. Or if we postponed it two or three years, I just want to make sure that we have those, excuse my terminology, those two elephant excuse my terminology, those two elephant brains in the room when we're talking about this, because they're the ones that know this plant inside and out. They know what works, they know what doesn't work, and I want to make sure that the city takes full advantage of them during this process.
Well, this is Commissioner Eastman. I agree to ask questions.
I'm sorry, Dwayne, I did not hear you.
Oh, I totally agree. That's why I asked the question, so have more of the questions answered about going into this contract with them so we can get started on fixing the items that need to be fixed as soon as possible.
Are you making a motion?
I will make that motion that we approve item number two. I don't have it in front of me.
It's a resolution authorizing the city to enter into the preliminary design-build agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald for an amount not to exceed $375,000.
Thank you for finishing that up.
You're welcome. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, Jay Warren.
Thank you, Jay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
This is Canyon. Yes, I've got some things. I toured the plant with Tommy and Rod and some other people that came out, and we looked at it, and I don't think people understand how, how much those guys do to keep that running. When we had the massive 500-year flood, Tommy made it do what they said it couldn't do, and he kept everything moving, and I just, I feel that that is not saluted enough, and Rod's expertise as well. So, I wanted to say that publicly, that both of them have done an amazing job keeping everything moving for the city.
As a, this is Karen, the mayor. I can concur with Canyon, as I have seen these two individuals during disasters, and it's amazing what they keep doing. The city, citizens are just not aware of the underlying professionalism we have within our ranks, and I too salute them. I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. We have, the motion has passed. Thank you, Leslie. What's, I've lost my page.
City mayor updates. We've gotten through one or two of those, I think.
Yeah, most of the, this is Nick Hernandez, most of the other ones are fairly minor. Are there any questions for me?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Eastman has no questions.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second, this Canyon.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for adjournment. Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you.